All right, good afternoon. I'd like to call the meeting to order. If I could ask us all rise for the pledge of allegiance. And Mr. Bateson, if you'd lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First up, we have our minutes from the September 18th, 2019 regular meeting. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Second.
Any comments on the minutes as distributed?
I don't have any, no.
All right. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next up, some recognition for the Norma Freeland Breast Cancer 20th anniversary, as well as the fifth anniversary of their Pink Pledge events. We've got a few folks here from Norma Freeland. Would you guys like to come up and fill us in a little bit? On what all has transpired?
Hi. Thank you very much for this recognition. My name is Marlene Batista. I'm a Fairfield resident. And with me is Kristen Staco. She's also one of the Pink Pledge chairs. We have Molly Milano, who is the community outreach and works at the Norma Freeland Breast Center, and Kate Pick, who is the development manager for the Norma Freeland Breast Center. We just wanted to come and say thank you. And just, I mean, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, right? So, we're all in pink. And people say, "Why pink? Why do you pink out the town? Why do you do all this?" It's to remind women to go and get their mammograms. Prevention is the best protection. So, that's why we do all this. And we have been so overwhelmed and so humbled by all the support that the town has given us and the community at large, our merchants, our restaurants, our fitness centers, everything. I mean, we thought five years ago, we were going to do one campaign, one and done, for the 15th year. And here we are, five years later, and almost $700,000. So, we're hoping that we can hit the million-dollar mark this year with this fifth year. But the enthusiasm and the energy and just the, just the, all the excitement that sort of comes around for October, even though, yes, there's, you know, people that do lose their lives from breast cancer, we try to bring the positive as to what the pink does and what early detection can do, and the importance of the education behind it. And, you know, from the schools all the way up through to the seniors, and we have everybody participating. So, we just wanted to come and remind all the women out there to get their mammograms, make the appointment, and say thank you, and just really tell the town what we're doing. And that's why you see all the pink, the pink police car, fire engines, all those kinds of things. So, we thank you for all of your support as well.
I thank you. Any comments from the board?
I would say thank you to you and all you do. I know that it's becoming something people are looking forward to, every October, seeing the town pink. It's one of those things we do here in Fairfield. I see other communities trying to catch up to how much we actually do in Fairfield. And it makes me think, I'm happy that we're leading this charge on this. It brings the community together. It lets us rally around a worthy cause as an entire town. So, thank you. Thank you for all you do. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Kristen.
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you also. $700,000, that's quite an achievement. It's become part of our fall ritual to participate in this. It's a great program, and it's a worthy cause, and it does serve a greater purpose. So, thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you very much.
I've got to thank you.
We have 100% of schools participating this year, and public and private. So, that's really exciting for us. And Molly's leading that effort. And it's kicked off with a great pink day today at one of the private schools. So, we're geared up, ready to go.
Fantastic.
The principal had a whole light pink suit, the entire, whole suit. I put it on Instagram and our Facebook, you can see.
Perfect.
And yesterday, we did the pink bench dedication, which obviously you were at. So, that is a gift back to the town for all of the support that they have given us.
No, definitely want to thank you for the pink bench. It's in Sherman Green, so it's out there today. So, anybody walking by Sherman Green can definitely see that and potentially sit at that.
It will stay there.
Yep. So, thank you for that. Also, you know, you've done a great job of getting the town employees, different departments, all very involved, not only police and fire that are very involved, but I still go back to five years ago when I saw that the entire Public Works team, all 100-plus members, in pink t-shirts down at the Public Works yard and doing that. And I thought that was just a great shot, but speaks to the support that you've engendered in our town, both in the government as well as in our community out there. So, I want to thank you for everything you've done there. And as part of that, we also have a proclamation here for you in honor of, again, the 20th anniversary of the Norma Freeland Center and the fifth anniversary of Fairfield's Pink Pledge event. And I know you were here right at the start and selling us on this. So, I want to thank you for your efforts over those five years to do that. And as part of that, it's my privilege and honor to declare October 2019 as Norma Freeland Breast Center and Pink Pledge Month throughout the town of Fairfield. So, if you wouldn't mind having your picture taken with us?
Sure. We just wanted to give you guys a little.
It's a new magnet.
All right.
Thank you.
Ah, yes.
You must have seen it.
Thank you.
Tell us where you're at.
Yes, you've got your pink tie on.
Want to get in the middle? Are we in the middle or are we?
Are we going to do this?
Okay. And Donna wanted me to extend her apologies for not being able to attend. She has another meeting, but she wanted to thank you.
That reminds me, are there any other events coming up this week?
This week? Yes. Very important. On Saturday, at Penfield Beach, there will be a walk, Pink Pledge Walk. It starts at 8:30. And you can go to pinkpledge.org to register. There's going to be a kids' fun run, and you can bring your pets. We're going to have a pink pet contest. And so, there's, that sort of kicks off the rest of the month. But you can go to pinkpledge.org to look for all of the different events that'll be coming up. There's pretty much something for everybody. So, thank you for reminding me to mention the pink walk.
No, thank you again for all you do.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, for information only, resignations from the Holland Hill Building Committee. Giuseppe, also known as Joe Michelangelo, unaffiliated from 196 Figular Avenue, resignation date was September 20th, 2019. Moving on to item number six, from the town attorney. This requires Board of Finance and RTM approval and a report from Town, Plan, and Zoning Commission. This is postponed from September 18th, and it is as follows. To here, consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Director of Community and Economic Development. Resolve that the town of Fairfield purchase the property known as 1020 Old Post Road, assessor's map number 180, lot 3, from Helen E. McElroy Revocable Trust for the sum of $825,000, as more particularly set forth in real estate sales agreement between said parties. Further resolve that a bond resolution entitled a resolution appropriating $1.2 million for the cost of acquiring and improving 1020 Old Post Road to expand parking at the main public library and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation be and hereby is approved. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Second.
The item is now before us. Mr. Lesser, Mr. Barnhart, would one of you like to give us an update?
For the record, Mark Barnhart, Director of Community and Economic Development for the town, I provided in your packet a brief written update as to where things stand at the moment. We have, subsequent to our conversation at the last meeting, we had a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission. That is one of the boards that we need to consult with and receive approval for because the sale is conditioned upon approval of various boards and commissions. As noted at our last meeting, we have received a written offer. We've received multiple inquiries and a written offer with respect to the purchase of the front portion of the property, including the residence. It would seem clear from our conversations here and with the library board and with other town departments, there wasn't an immediate need for the, for municipal use for the purchase of the house, per se. And so, we have provided you with a revised parking lot layout that takes that into account. Based on that revised layout, we, again, estimate our net cost to the town of half a million dollars. This would yield slightly less in the number of additional parking spaces, 39, based on the revised layout before you. I think the big question at the last meeting was the disposition of the library board as it relates to the proposed purchase, acquisition, and improvements. I have had occasion to meet with the library board again. I don't want to speak for them, but I know the chairman, Sonal Rajan, is here this evening, and will also, I can turn it over and let her speak on behalf of the board, but happy to, once Sonal says what she needs to, from the library board's perspective, happy to answer any questions you may have. So, Sonal.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Sonal Rajan. I live at 411 Lennox Road, and I am the chairman of the Library Board of Trustees. As the governing body of the Fairfield Public Library, the Board of Library Trustees oversees the operations and property of the Fairfield Public Library, which includes the main library and the Woods Branch Library. Maximizing the library's physical space is always a strategic priority. However, expanding the parking lot was not something considered possible by the trustees, given the physical land and cost constraints of where the main library is located. When presented with the chance to expand the main library's parking lot, the trustees saw a unique opportunity that required careful and thoughtful consideration. At a special meeting on October 1st, which was last night, the trustees unanimously voted to support the town of Fairfield's purchase of the back half of the lot at 1020 Old Post Road for the expansion of the main library's parking lot. The trustees also unanimously voted to fund up to $450,000 for the town to construct a new lot and improve upon the existing lot, assuming the sale of the front half of the lot. The funding is to be withdrawn from the trustees' endowment over a 20-year period. The parking lot will be built and maintained by the town, and thanks to the prudent management of the endowment by previous trustees, the trustees are financially able to support this project that has been a constant concern since the main library's last renovation in 2005. The amount the trustees agreed to fund is based on what we believe to be the value of the lot, restrictions on our endowment, and being mindful of future capital projects for the library. The project addresses a longstanding need by the library's patrons, staff, and town of Fairfield residents, alleviating congestion on the street and in the current lot, and providing a safe place to park, especially for young families and seniors. The trustees are assured by the town the historical significance and character of the area will be maintained. The trustees believe this is a long-term investment in the Fairfield community, as the role of the library continues to evolve beyond books, and more and more patrons of all ages rely on the library to expand their horizons, learn new skills, find a job, volunteer, or just be social. The trustees are grateful for the support of the patrons, residents, town bodies, and entire Fairfield community to make this project a reality. The trustees assure the residents and town of its commitment to continue to make the Fairfield Public Library integral to what makes Fairfield a unique and desirable place to live, work, and play. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
As noted before, and I'll just reiterate, the proposed purchase contract, the purchase of property, is conditioned upon the approval of not just this board, but the Board of Finance and RTM, as well as the approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Historic District Commission, as to the proposed parking lot use for the back half of the property. Is there anything else I need to? Oh, we, Attorney Lesser did point out that we did receive a written offer. That offer has not been accepted, and we have to, we would have to consider that and work out the logistics of how that would transpire, but that would be the intention.
A written offer for what?
For the front half, including the residence.
From who?
I'll let Stan.
A purchase.
Other questions that I can answer?
Mr. Bateson?
Yeah, I'll jump in. Okay, the purchase of the front house, while you're digging through the file there, Stan, I just, I'd be interested, is that as-is?
Yes. The offer was as-is. I can answer that.
All right. In your opening thing, you said the net cost to the town would be 500. Does that include the 450 from the library board of trustees?
Net cost would be 500. The board of trustees, as I understand it, are offering to pay $450,000 of the $500,000 estimated net cost.
Okay. All right. So, this is, this is a big development. I had, do we have any of this in writing? I mean, I haven't seen the sales, I haven't seen the offer on the front house, and I haven't seen a commitment letter from the library board of trustees. So, I'd like to see those before we act. And it looks like, I'm not going to put words in your mouth, but it sounds like it's some sort of annuity structure here, a 20-year. It sounds like they're going to have to draw it down, so...
What I presented to the library board last night was, was an option that, similar to how they're financing a portion of the addition to the main public library, where they're essentially paying a portion of the debt service to the town from the endowment fund. So, I ran a calculation with the assistance of the chief financial, chief fiscal officer. A 20-year note at 3% interest at half a million dollars works out to a monthly payment of $2773 per month.
Okay. It looks like we need some more information. I'd like to see that spreadsheet, too. So, given this new information, I'd like to make a motion to table this to our next meeting.
Could, could I ask that perhaps I have a little bit more discussion?
Sure.
Before you entertain that, so if there's any other points or questions that come up? Tim, did you have any?
Well, I was interested.
You?
Do you need more?
No. I guess, Stan, you got an offer letter?
So, we have a binder. I don't feel comfortable releasing the names.
All right.
But I could, but I do have the binder here. So, let me tell you, it's a binder for $650,000 for the front half of the property. It's a pretty standard real estate binder. It's got a number of contingencies in it. There's a mortgage contingency. They want building termite, water, radon, lead inspections, standard inspections.
Have not? As-is?
No, it's not as-is.
Okay.
They have the right to inspect. And that's all we have, quite frankly, is a binder. We would need to proceed to a contract. I don't know how we would structure the deal, quite frankly, whether we'd buy the whole piece, sell to them, whether, you know, we'd split with the sellers. Seller would sell directly that portion to these people and the back portion to us. That still remains to be worked out. So, that's where we are now. There is one other issue I wanted to bring your attention, and I just found out about it today. It was brought to my attention that the abutting owners of the piece that we want to buy have a right-of-way over a piece of town land. You all know that there's a strip of land that's owned by the town, okay, that was originally supposed to be used as a road years and years ago. It's never been used as a road. It probably, it's never going to be cut through, but, but the original deeds gave the abutting owners the right to what's called pass and repass over this road. So, the plan that I believe is currently before you calls for a certain number of parking spaces, and it uses a portion of that right of, of our property that is covered by the right-of-way. And it's my understanding that some of the abutting owners may make a claim that we can't block that. Don't know how valid that claim is. I did reach out to our title company, because if we bought it, we'd get title insurance. And off the top of his head, the lawyer that I spoke to at our company said, you know, we probably would not insure over that. We would want to take an exception. So, if we had a claim made against us for blocking it, they may not come in and defend us. So, I have two suggestions. The first is that you could either make the parking lot smaller so that you don't touch this piece of property or the right-of-way, in which case, I don't think there would be a problem. But if the town decided it wanted to use the full spaces that the plan is currently before you, I would recommend that we go out and get an opinion from, from a lawyer that deals with title stuff to make sure before we bought this, or before we decided to go ahead with that. I just wanted you to know that now, and if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any other questions at this point? If not, I have one for the library. Sonal, if I could ask you to come back? Just, is there any, you know, one of the things I had assumed, and I kind of do this with my parking, I always park in the street as opposed to trying to go into the library parking lot. Is there any data that says how full it is or not full it is? Because some of the emails we've gotten said there's plenty of room on the street that the parking in the library lot has not really been an issue, and there's enough other parking around there that doesn't make this an absolute need from that standpoint? Is there any studies, data, anything on that line?
I'm sure that Helene has actual studies to prove the data, but I know anecdotally, if you go during the morning when there's the story time, there's no way you'll ever find a parking spot in the lot. And you would probably have to park two blocks up, all the way down Old Post Road, to find a spot. But I'm certainly happy to get back to you with that data.
If you could, so that the board didn't review any of that kind of, you were kind of reviewing?
Not any formal studies, no. Helene mentioned some studies that had been done, maybe just after the renovation was completed, so that was 2005. She mentioned some things that had been done in 2008, and I'm not sure if she's done a formal study of the parking since then.
Okay.
But this has been a constant complaint of people who attend library events, regardless of what event they're attending, like you, for selectmen. I never park in the lot. I haven't in three or four years, even with young children. I just park on the street because I have a large car, and I don't think it's going to make the turn.
Yep. And to be fair, I've always found a space on the street to park in.
Yeah.
Thank you. To the town attorney, this is in the Historic District. What, what is the approval that the Historic District Commission has in terms of anything that is being proposed here?
They need, they would need to get a certificate of appropriateness for the lot and also to take the building. There's a building there. There's a shed or garage in the back of the property. They would need approval to take that down. And apparently, and probably Mark might be able to fill in more, I believe that an application has been made, but he might be able to fill in on that.
Mr. Barnhart, if you could fill us in a bit more?
Yes. As reported by the town attorney, we did file a certificate of appropriateness application with the Historic District Commission. It covers both the proposed demolition of the two-bay, single-story garage structure, detached garage, as well as the construction of a parking lot behind a five-foot privacy fence. And that would be the subject of their meeting on October 10th.
Yep. I had a couple of questions, again, from neighbors. Does the Historic District Commission have jurisdiction over a parking lot?
We, I looked at their regulations and talked to the town attorney. I believe that they do, and that's why we filed an application with them. And I also talked to the chairman of the Historic District Commission just to make sure that I understood the regulations properly.
Is there any issue with zoning? One of the other questions that I got in an email was, is all of this residential? Does this become quasi-commercial with a parking lot use?
It's, no, no.
Any zone change or anything along those lines that?
It doesn't change the zone. Our zoning regulations provide that town uses are permitted in any zone, subject to the granting of a special exception, which is what? So, there is no change of the underlying zone. It does not make the property commercial.
Okay. But just to be clear, if the Historic District Commission doesn't approve this, then?
Probably wouldn't go forward.
Nothing would be allowed?
No. And that's a contingency in the contract.
Yeah. When's the Historic District Commission reviewing this?
October 10th. And we would expect, we did have a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission on the 24th. We would expect a decision from them, as well as a recommendation under Section 8-24 on their meeting on the 15th of October.
Okay. And again, just so everybody's clear on the planning and zoning role in this, their approval is not required. However, if it's not a positive recommendation, if...
There's, there's actually two things we asked the planning and zoning for. One is a referral, mandatory referral under Section 8-24 of the Connecticut General Statutes. That's a recommendation that comes back to the town bodies. It is not binding in that if, if they make a negative recommendation, it could be overruled by supermajority of the RTM. However, we also, the contract is contingent upon...
Correct.
The contract is contingent upon the planning and zoning approving a special exception application for the parking lot use. So, there is a contingency in the contract currently that does require planning and zoning to approve the parking lot use in order for the contract to be fulfilled.
Okay.
Again, another question?
One of the other questions that was raised in one of the emails is exactly how many parking spaces are part of this? And given, as the town attorney suggested, if it was constrained by being on just the subject property, what would be the additional parking space count?
Yes, we've, we've run a number of iterations of this plan from, from the start, as was originally proposed to you. Well, currently, there are 49 parking spaces to support a building that's approximately 50,000 square feet. There, our original proposal to you provided for 48 additional parking spaces. We have since revised that to take into account the interest of another individual to purchase the front half of the property and to provide for an adequate buffer between, between the parking lot use and that private home. And that revised plan is a net gain of 39 parking spaces. We did look at several other options, one of which did involve actually constructing a secondary means of egress, or a road, or driveway, however you want to term it, across the existing town property at 1010 Old Post Road. We did present that to the abutting homeowners. It's not our preferred option, and based on discussions we've had with the police, fire, and a traffic consultant, the secondary egress is not, not required for, for circulation purposes. But if we were to further revise this to confine the parking lot to the back half of the property at 1020 Old Post Road, the subject property, we estimate the net gain to be about 29 parking spaces. So, approximately 10 less parking spaces than what's presented in the revised plan that's before you.
are downtown and what their kind of capacity is, or any average occupancy, or how does that?
Well, I think, I think currently, library patrons use on-street parking if the lot's full, or they may park at Sherman Green, or perhaps in some of the other lots, although they're privately operated and under the town control. I do know that the employees of the public library do use downtown employee parking passes. We provide them with 13 parking spaces so that they can use the downtown employee parking spaces at Sherman Green or elsewhere within the downtown. I believe, according to Helene, that they have some other options as it relates to the Brick Walk parking area, where they also procure some spaces there for some of their employees to park. But it's currently, you know, Pond Street is the option if the lot's full.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
No, I don't, I don't.
I know you were looking at making a motion to postpone. What I was going to suggest is, because there are a number of people here, I think, that wanted to comment on this, do we allow for public comment on the proposal? So, we...
Yeah, I'm fine with that as well. I mean, I, I came in here knowing exactly what I wanted to do. I did all my research on this. I'm, I'm very surprised at the library, the library's commitment. Last week, they hadn't even endorsed the project. This week, they're putting in $450,000, which is making me recalculate what I was originally thinking about doing. So, I would like to hear public comment. So I would like to hear public comment, and I would like a little more time.
All right.
I just wanted to address the reason why we came up last night with that decision. The, the proposal came to us at the 11th hour.
Us too.
I know, a few weeks ago. And we didn't have all of the information. There was not enough information and there was misinformation, a lot of miscommunication. And so we needed Mark to come last night and really present the opportunity as it is. And even when he attended our meeting on September 16th, a few days later, the opportunity had changed. And so at first, we were presented with the 1.2 million, and that's a very large number. And then a week and a half later, there was a possible buyer for the front half of the property, which meant that we wouldn't have to take on the house also, because that's not something that's appealing to us. We don't need a third property for the library. So when we found out that it was just for the back half of the lot, that was far more appealing and probably the only opportunity that we foresee to expand our parking. So I hope that answers your question about why this all happened at the last minute.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, to move to public comment. If anybody from the public would like to comment, please just come up to the podium and introduce yourself. Would point out, this is public comment as opposed to question and answer, but please feel free to comment.
Thank you. My name is Jim Menard. I live at 1,000 Old Post Road. It's one of the properties that abuts the town's property. Forgive me for being nervous. I work with computers all day. I'm not used to talking to elected officials. So as, as you may have seen on the illustration, the, the town's property is 60 feet wide. The current, the last plan we had seen goes 30 feet into that. Our driveways that we share with 996 in front of us are entirely on that strip of land, and some of our driveways would be, would be cut away by this. Further, our deed and the, the Catus's deed, the 996 deed, grant us an easement across the full 60 feet of right-of-way until such time as the parcel is open as a public highway. The deed to the town is from 1960. It's subject to our right to pass, quote, until such time, sorry, open as a public highway, not for any use whatsoever. The town cannot use it for any other purpose, just a public highway. The right-of-way can never be used as a public highway because it's surrounded on three sides by public property already, plus the rest of the land, as you've already heard, I believe, today, for that highway cannot be taken. It's all public. It's, it's not, the town never took it. This was back in 1960 or so. And so it's been impossible to do this, at the very least, since West Morgan was developed in, in the mid-'90s. The town cannot extinguish our easement over all or any portion of the right-of-way simply by declaring that the town now intends to use it for a parking lot, because a parking lot may be a public use, but it's not a highway. The town is unable to extinguish our easement over any portion by opening a public highway, sorry, for the reasons I just said about the public, the private property around. It will never be developed as a highway. The town cannot extinguish the property, our easement over this property by simply abandoning the paper road. And any conveyance of the right-of-way by the town to a third party will be subject to our easements across the entirety of the right-of-way, all 60 feet, not just 30 feet of it. We feel we're getting railroaded here. We acquired our homes believing that the driveway would be maintained in its current configuration and then this, this property would. Since we acquired our properties, us 20 years ago, we and our neighbors at 996, whoever they, they have been, we paid all the maintenance charges despite the fact that the town's charter states that the Department of Public Works and the Tree Warden are responsible for the preservation, care, and removal of trees and shrubs and other vegetation. Now we have to fight the town to maintain its current status. We've paid for mowing, plowing, foliage pruning, tree branch removal, and reseeding. We have never submitted a single invoice to the town for those expenses. This development will reduce the values of our home quite greatly. And, and literally, when I walk out of my house and open my front door, there will be the parking lot, right there. And yeah, there'll be a fence and maybe some hedges, but guess what? There's also lights going up above it, you know, the, the lights will be disturbing our nighttime, et cetera, et cetera. So the road was never constructed, never dedicated, never accepted by the town. We've actually reviewed all relevant meeting minutes from 1957 to the present time regarding this acquisition. My wife is a commercial real estate attorney, although she's not abided in Connecticut, and she's homesick right now. She's really sick. She has laryngitis, otherwise she'd probably be saying this much more eloquently than I. So it was never submitted for a vote. None of the remaining portions of the property were ever acquired. The street was never dedicated, let alone built. The town's been sitting on this property since 1960, getting no tax revenue. So finally, to restate, we have an easement and will remain, continue to have an easement across the entire 60 feet of this, no matter what gets built there, except a public highway, which can't get built there. Therefore, we request that this development be denied because it violates our deeded rights and our good faith throughout all of these years. Thank you very much for your time and attention. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to comment from the public? Please, come on up. Again, just give us your name and address and?
My name is Mary Pat DeCarlo, and I represent the Kennedy Center located at 1038 Old Post Road, which is actually the neighbors to the property that's being sold. My biggest concern is that we didn't hear about this project until the day after the zoning committee meeting. We've never been approached by the town in regards to any of our concerns. We share a driveway with that property. We understand and appreciate the need for parking because we have difficulty parking on the street when we have staff meetings or what other activities going on at the group home. And we do have people cutting across our lawn constantly to get to the library because they're parking on the street. But my biggest concern and my request would be that this project does get slowed down and that we are consulted with or we're given some more information, because I really have little to no information. And again, didn't find out about it until after the zoning meeting. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other members of the public? Please.
Hi, my, my name is Carrie McOver, and I'm here in support of the purchase of the property at 1020 Old Post Road and the expansion of the library parking. And I'm also speaking for Fairfield senior advocates as well because we're concerned about town policies that impact seniors. So here are my reasons. The first one is that the library is severely underparked by anyone's standards. At 10:15 a.m. Tuesday last week, every space was occupied. People were driving through looking for spaces, since you can't tell if there are spaces without driving in. We've probably all had the experience of driving into the lot, not finding a space, and leaving. This adds to traffic movements at an already busy corner. More to the point, the ITE, which is the Institute of Traffic Engineers publication, Parking Generation, fourth edition, has parking demand for land use data library. The ITE variable is gross floor area and the ratio is 2.61. The ITE, since our library has 50,000 square feet of gross floor area, that means 130 parking spaces would be appropriate, and we're nowhere's near that. Wilton, Connecticut, a neighboring town, requires one space per 400 feet, which would be about 125 spaces. Also, the, the various special events that the library holds creates a demand for parking. Our current 49 spaces, many of which are difficult to get into, are just not enough for moms with toddlers and young children. And then there's an increasing need for seniors who'd like to, or need to park close to the library because of medical reasons. The additional spaces proposed will bring us closer to the standards, but many will still use on-street parking when necessary, as we, I think we all do, if we can, but there's a need for parking in the lot. Any additional, my second reason, any additional parking will not visually impact the view of the historic district from Old Post Road. It's well behind the house. That's that little garage. The removal of the two-car garage will be barely noticeable. The house will remain. It will be sold to a new owner who will be required to get a certificate of appropriateness from the HDC for exterior changes they might consider. Third reason, through the purchase, the town has an opportunity to connect a property that may be needed sometime in the future. Just to the south of 1020 Old Post Road is almost half an acre parcel of land at 1010 Old Post Road. This property is already owned by the town. It is used by the two adjacent homes at 996 and 1,000 Old Post Road for access to their property through an existing easement on that property and a shared driveway. The purchase of the property at 1020 Old Post Road will connect all of these parcels. And this is important. It connects the main library, all of the parking, and 1010 Old Post Road. I can't speculate on what this might be needed for in the future, but it may be indeed a good idea to connect these properties now. My fourth reason is the net cost of these parking spaces will be significantly less than the proposed purchase price for the house. Since the house will be sold, should, since the house will be sold, that should bring the net cost of acquisition and development of the parking lot below the purchase price. So I urge you to seriously consider and support the proposal for the town to acquire the property, to expand and reconfigure the parking lot, and to make a connection to 1010 Old Post Road, because it may not come around again. Thank you. I have copies. Do you want copies?
If you'd like to hand them out, we will take them.
Okay. Is that two or one?
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like public comment? Please.
I'm Bill Hoff. I live at 285 Hemlock Hills Road North in Fairfield. I am in favor of the project. I do understand the feelings of the folks who live next door. I think that's more than reasonable on their part. So I'm in favor of reducing the size of the parking lot so it stays within the bounds of whatever is legal and, you know, putting in suitable landscaping. I'm not a landscape expert, but some kind of evergreens is what I seem to think of as being an appropriate plant or tree, whatever, to try to ameliorate the, the impact it has on them. And I realize also the lighting is designed to be, and I know there's this lighting that can be down so that it doesn't affect the neighbors. But the, the extent of the greater good, I think, in this case, and the fact that this particular piece of property is unique in that it's attached to the current parking lot, I don't see this coming through again. So I, I worry that if we, I really understand why you folks need to have the answers that you need, but I worry that if it means, you meet again in two weeks, am I right? And then hopefully, we can put it together by then. Anyways, thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
My name is Emily Calconia-Williams. I live at 915 Old Post Road, and I am not for the purchase of this land for the parking lot. There's a few reasons, two, if you lump them up into two groups, it's financial reasons and historical reasons. Myself, as part, some of our other members here talked about Old Post Road residents. Mr. Tetra, you're one as well. We have a duty as citizens in a historic district to preserve and protect our current guidelines of where we live. While I'm in favor for the library, I'm a mom of two young kids. In fact, I was there this afternoon picking up books for both of them. I'm in favor of senior citizens. I, I have a senior citizen that lives, my father-in-law, in a community here in Southport, and I'm a true believer of the library and what it is to use. We have to think about what that means for the historic district. And unfortunately, for some, this, we are in, in a, it's located in the historic district where we have to preserve it and think about that. So it's not just this isolated incident where it's, okay, we need more parking, so let's do that. We have to think about the circumstances around it. If we decide to go ahead, you decide to go ahead and move forward and do this, what's the precedent for other homeowners? Can I sell part of my backyard to the town and you guys could create a parking lot for more? Who says, who's to say we can't? Right? That's setting a precedent for doing something like that. Another thing is, there's been a lot of complaints about the parking, and I, I will say, I've been lucky enough to live in the center of town and most of the time walk. But I've also then had observations of who's in front of my house, what the activity is like. And I live on the library side of Old Post Road. The front of my house is empty all day long. Now, I'm not saying a mother with little babies or somebody that needs assistance walking, needs to park in front of my house and walk to the library, but what I'm saying is, have we thought about ideas of having special parking spots in the current lot, designated to senior citizens, designated to moms of toddlers, right? Where people like myself, who are fortunate that don't need that assistant, can park on that parking lot and easily walk to that library? I also have a question for you. Have we done any studies or thought about, are the people who are actually parking in the parking lot using the library? Because we have many different parking lots all over that people may just be going in there and going to the brick walk. There are stairs right there that go down to the brick walk. I don't know. I haven't, I'm not a traffic study person professional by any means, but have we thought about that? Should the parking lot be monitored by people to make sure that library patrons are really using that? I'm trying to think, to make sure I have everything here. From a, so historic, I think you get the point where I'm coming from. From a financial aspect, you know, I was happy to hear, I walked in late, that the library wants to, to put money in. That's, that's great. The town's not in any position right now to be thinking about spending a million-plus on, on different properties. We have, we have a scandal, publicity scandals going on in this town right now, and taxpayers, we just, what, last night, found out almost $2 million for this pileup issue. What's going on with Penfield and what, what are we going to have to do there? It just doesn't seem like it's right timing. So when you kind of think about all the stars aligned, we have a historic property, we have, our town seems to be in a financial, you know, challenge with, challenge financially, I try to say it in a nice way. One, two. And then let's think about what these, what's really going on with the parking spots, and maybe we can be more user-friendly to those in need with the current parking lot.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to comment?
Suzanne Meska, 123 Rygate Road. This has to be the one item that is speeding through at record pace. It came before you. The next thing was the call to TP&amp;Z for a public hearing about something that had just been brought to you. And now we're back here again. I couldn't even believe the agenda when I saw that we are already having this discussion on a property that, according to the real estate listing, has been for sale for over a year. So I'm a little confused why we're fast-tracking this so much and really not allowing the public a chance, other than we got to go to TP&amp;Z and tell our sad but true tale to them, and we're now here tonight telling you our sad but true tale. But it feels like there has not been enough community outreach from Town Hall to these neighbors. I mean, the neighbors feel, you know, from what I heard at TP&amp;Z, that kind of a betrayal. And that's not what we need to have in this town. You know, the center of town has a historic district. It's had a historic district for a reason. And while I appreciate we don't have enough parking spaces maybe at the library, when TP&amp;Z authorized the extension of that library, it authorized the number of spaces that it's there. And so while I appreciate that the apple has now been presented and we can do this, I am highly cautious of the fact that we now want to be real estate agents and we want to sell a house that Mr. Ambrose at TP&amp;Z noticed that it has asbestos. We have a tank that needs to be remediated. We're going to take down a garage. I don't know. All this, for now, what was 49 spaces or 48 spaces the last time this was presented to you to 39 spaces. And while I get that, it's very nice that the library trustees had an emergency meeting to come up with $450,000 on a 20-year annuity. My problem here is that there's a, there's a, there's a conflict. We are running Todd Grant that now is in front of TP&amp;Z with a big red line going through Fairfield Center to make it more walkable, because this is where everyone wants to walk. And yet, we're willing to take a historic property and, in essence, pave paradise to put up a parking lot. And I don't know, what are we doing? Are we to a point where we really believe the center of town is going to be a walkable green-type environment where people want to live and do all of their, their doings in there, and we are going away from people driving everywhere? Or are we now investing in cars again? Because then we have to start making a decision and set a direction on where we are taking the town of Fairfield and where we are taking the commercial district in Fairfield. These people bought houses in a historic district. They did it knowing what they were doing. They believed the town supported them, and now they're here fighting the very town that they thought supported them. So please reconsider. Reconsider this for so many other reasons then. Reconsider this for so many other reasons then, that the library is willing to give you $450,000 on a 20-year annuity.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
My man came with me here. This is my man, Will Cades.
Hello.
I'm Anne Cades. I live at 996 Old Post Road. Okay, well, where to start? Sorry, things are a little different now than they were when I wrote this a couple hours ago. Okay, so first I want to echo the statements about the TOD project and the strategic plan project. The town spent tens of thousands of dollars, I'm assuming, on two consultant studies last year. I went to the meetings. I was pleased to see and hear about innovative transportation ideas. One of the first infrastructure projects you proposed, though, has nothing to do with the consultants' recommendations or the public input gathered. Sorry, I wonder what the cost was of that. Seems like that should be wrapped up into the cost of this somehow. I have been studying municipal parking lots for the last two weeks, and there's a very well-known book called The High Price of Free Parking, which talks about the psychology behind parking and how internal it is, and everybody gets really revved up about it. So it's an easy thing to get people out and talking about. But if you read the book, I'm sorry, I'm missing my line. What actually happens is a loss of investment money and land value when you create free parking lots. All innovative, municipal parking thought now, in terms of planning, transportation planning, is for on-street parking. Have there been any alternative plans to this? Why is this the only option? Especially when the neighbors are against it. Traffic. Encouraging more traffic in this particular area will only cause more danger to pedestrians and bicycles. On-street parking is a free form of traffic calming. People fly down the street on Sundays and in the summer, in the summer when the library's closed. And to have cars parked there makes Old Post Road safer. The Plan of Conservation Development states that even without the parking, this parking traffic, I'm sorry, will increase by 13% in the next 10 years. This intersection cannot absorb anymore. I want to make a point, a big point, that I am sympathetic to the library and its patrons. I have spent a good portion of my career as a transportation planner, working for seniors and the disabled. I walk on these sidewalks every day. I know they aren't perfect. For a small amount of money, the town could improve the pedestrian access here. They could make the sidewalks ADA compliant, and they could provide more lighting. And I did want to say about lighting, in terms of the parking lot lighting that will be now lying awake like Jerry when he was in Kramer's apartment. Have there been, wait, two years ago, a neighbor asked the town to, for brighter lights, for brighter streetlights, because it's difficult to see the pedestrians coming along when we're pulling out of our, sorry, when we're pulling out of our driveways, especially in the dark. And two people said no, and the town said, okay, forget it. So the fact that, like, we're asking for safety and the town is saying no, I feel is contrary to what you're proposing right now. Okay, historic. The historic district is beautiful and rare. Residents here regularly have to fight against developers to maintain its cohesiveness. The town should be proud of this. Right now, you have a chance to be leaders on either side of this issue. Are you in favor of the systematic chipping away at the character of our district, or are you not? I'm sure developers are watching this, just waiting to see if it's a green light for them. If it is a green light, I don't know how much more people can care, because we feel alone in it, in the fight. We want your help. We are the living library of this town, and we get no money. I'm sorry, I'm getting emotional. We do it for the love of our old homes and the character of the neighborhoods. I can't believe I'm here begging the town and crying to support us, but I am. As the Plan of Conservation and Development states, once developed, it is gone forever. I have petitions. I have an online petition that has 650 signatures. I can hand you that. It also has comments. And I spent a lot of my time the last two weeks going door-to-door in our neighborhood. I have 78 signatures, personal signatures, from our neighbors, including, I believe it's everyone on Wes Morgan, every abutting neighbor, and many, I think it's 48 people in the historic district. So if you want to hand those over, you can hand those over. Thank you. My assistant will hand those over. Neighbors. Every neighbor is against this. We were told that the last-
Why don't we start?
They aren't. It's a color copy. It's a color copy. Do you want the original? I can-
No, that's fine. We'll hand those to the secretary.
Okay. Every neighbor is against this. We were told at the last Board of Selectmen meeting that we would have a neighborhood meeting, but we haven't heard anything. I contacted the Kennedy, Kennedy Center last Tuesday, in case they weren't aware, as I was walking around trying to get signatures for the TPZ meeting. They said they, they said they had not been contacted. I'm glad to see them here. This procedure, it seems very unfair. It's my full-time job now. For the last two weeks, I've had to prepare for three major meetings, and each time the information is different. I have, sorry. And to the people who have sent me messages saying I shouldn't fight this, I say, when something like this happens to you and your neighborhood, you know, you will know how it feels when it happens. Then call me, because I will always fight for what is right, and this plan is wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
My name's Abigail Hanson. I've been here 20 years. I don't have much to add to her, but I do think sometimes you guys are very short-sighted on developing these projects in a cohesive manner. There are so many choppy parking lots, and things seem thrown together when it comes down to making the decision. It ends up being quickly done, and it, it cheapens the town. We're constantly compared to West Hartford, and I grew up there, and projects are done so much more cohesively. The parking is beautiful. It's easy to figure out. They have paid parking lots. You can figure out where to go very easily, as opposed to little jointed little things that make no sense. Along with the fact that we're constantly cutting down trees, which is what we value so much. I live across from the Town Hall parking lot on Penfield, and it constantly floods ever since they put in that parking lot. And the idea that you're going to cut down the very few remaining fully-developed, like 100-year-old trees on that lot near the library makes no sense to me as well, just to get 30 spots. And also, we have another development going in with the theater, and I can't understand how that isn't going to need additional parking that may alleviate a tremendous amount of this problem if it's done correctly.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I live at 135 Old Post Road. I have two quick points I'd like to make. Last week at the town planning and zoning meeting, Mr. Barnhart was explicitly asked by the chairman whether there had been any formal studies about parking at the library. His answer was no, there's not been. And that this need was deriving from the library director, who in turn was taking them from public surveys, asking how library services could be improved. The impression that this left was that it was rather unscientific, and that a lot of this was based on anecdotal evidence. The library was renovated in 2005, and I don't quite understand why the parking wasn't addressed then. You know, why was 49 spots okay then, but suddenly 15 years later, there's, there's some kind of controversy about that? And I also don't understand why we just can't park on Old Post Road, because as other people have said here, I never have any problem parking on Old Post Road. Now, I understand that a lot of the people speaking in favor of it are elderly. They may want to park close to the library. They may, particularly in the wintertime, be worried about slipping and falling, maybe. You know, why don't we talk about maybe having more handicap spots in the lot? Why don't we talk about maybe having designated senior spaces? They do that at Whole Foods. They do it at Stop &amp; Shop. Why can't we do that there? Or why can't we talk about maybe widening the sidewalks, making them more even, trying to keep clear of snow in the winter, so that people can get to the library and not be afraid of slipping and falling? You know, these are all issues we could have a conversation about, but it's hard to do so without a study that's backed by any kind of data or facts. Instead, this seems to be shoved down our throats, as if it's the last option or the only option. Second point, we can talk a little bit about the cost. And again, I'm just going to reiterate some, some previous points that were, that were brought up. FEMA's denied the money for the Penfield Pavilion. And I know that the, the fill pile, tempers are hot about that. But just this morning, I read in the Fairfield Patch, the Board of Finance set aside 1.8 million to pay for expenses related to it. Now, and in the patch article, it said, "The money set aside came from, quote, 'from funds allocated for the 2019 surplus contribution, library, and police budget, among other things,' unquote." So now we're taking money from the library to pay for the fill pile, okay? And then we're going to issue a bond, and we're going to go into debt, and the library's going to pay some of that back. That's great. But we're going to issue a debt to build parking spaces for the library. So we're taking money from the library. It doesn't make lick a sense. Regardless of every other argument against this project, I think in the context of what's going on in this town right now, this is not the right time to be spending 1.2 million dollars on a parking lot. Thank you for your time.
Any other comments from the public?
My name is Jennifer Andreasen. I'm sorry, I have a fever and I'm sick, so I'm trying to speak up. I live at 981 Old Post Road. At the last Selectmen meeting, I spoke, and as I mentioned before, there is no reason for the special exception application for residential historic property become, to become a parking lot. I'd like to comment on things that have happened since then. First of all, at the last meeting, it was mentioned also by someone previously that we were supposed to host a public meeting. The Board of Selectmen proposed that. That has not happened. That has not been scheduled. So I don't understand why we would be voting today, which I understand now we're not. Last time, one of the Selectmen asked for more detailed engineering drawings, concerns for rainwater came up. The latest drawings don't address this. The inspection report states that the basement floods during heavy rain. What will happen now with the parking lot? My next point was addressed, because it says the library is now contributing. I feel like we're, it's a sudden change of plans. Now we're decreasing the amount of lots, and now we could be down to 20-something spots, for 1.2 million dollars. This is a historic property, and yes, it has to go through the Historic Commission, but the Historic Commission is appointed by the town. So to me, that doesn't seem very fair for them to be very impartial when the town appoints them. They're going to go against their own boss, who appointed them. To the other points about the library study. I live, I run my business out of my house. I sit in the front of my house every day. It's totally empty in front of the house. I understand the elderly, our seniors, and moms or parents with young children need a place to park. We don't know who parks in that parking lot. I go through there to go to Brick Walk all the time, because there are steps that go to Brick Walk in the evening, and there's people parking in the parking lot, and the library's closed. So there's people parking there all times of the day, and we don't know what they're doing. So I think that we need to look at that as a real study, and having those additional 20, 30, 40 spaces coming out of that driveway right to a light or down the other way. Did anyone ever think, one person mentioned about Mommy &amp; Me is difficult for parking? I understand that. That probably is the only time of day I could say, my street looks like there's cars on it parked. Move it to Woods. That's free. We don't have to create a 1.2 million-dollar parking lot for Mommy &amp; Me storytime. So I think we have three libraries in this town. Why don't we think about using them more wisely instead of paying for a parking lot? Move things to Woods that are too busy at Main. Move things to Main, maybe that makes Woods busy. We have Pequot. We have three libraries. Most towns have one. So I think everyone needs to take a step back. As the Selectmen here said, we need to think about this a bit more and vote on it at a later date. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from the public?
I'd just like to address something that was said about when the library was renovated and there were 49 spots, and that was okay then. Well, there are two things. First of all, that was all the land there was, so that's why we had 49 spots. And also, libraries have changed significantly in the last 15 years, 20 years. They are now community centers, and much less, you still come and get your materials and leave, but there are amazing programs constantly being run in the library. And these programs have 50 people at a time, 20 people at a time, plus the regular traffic. So the, some people come, there are study rooms that are used, so there's more parking required than there was ages ago. And, you know, the finances don't seem, seems to be working out. The house is sold. The Board of Trustees came up with significant contributions, so there would be a very minor impact, the way I do the math, to the town. And I think that project that's needed, if you think of the community and the broader community, it abuts town land, and this would be good for everybody in town, not just one particular neighborhood, which I do understand the impact on that neighborhood. But I encourage you to think about the broader community and what the library represents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Dana Carey, 7 Green Acres Lane. When we did an addition on our house, we needed to apply for a variance, because there was a corner that ran a corner lot. And the first thing that we were asked when we went for the variance was, you need to draw a map of every single neighbor that connects to your property, and they have to agree to it. You've heard from the neighbors. There's no reason to have the conversation at the next meeting. You've heard from the neighbors. If I had presented, when I requested the variance, that the neighbors did not agree, it was a done deal. Go home. I encourage you to listen to the neighbors.
Any other public comment?
Yes, I'll be quick. Please don't destroy our homes. You want to build a parking lot in our backyard. Would any of you be okay with that? Not, I'm not speaking rhetorically. Would any of you be okay with the parking lot being built in your backyard? No. So don't destroy our homes, and don't postpone it. Just vote now. Thank you.
No. Excuse me, Ms.?
Sorry, I forgot one last point. I'm sorry. I'm not well. Please have patience with me. I have 101 fever. The one last point I just wanted to make was that, you know, back in May, when the community theater, the letter from Cleveland to the economic development, in the abatement, request for abatement letter, he asked for 20 additional spots to be designated in Sherman Green specifically only for SHU use. So if that happens in Sherman Green, when community theater happens, what's going to happen to those people who park there? They're going to go park in the library. And now the library is paying for those parking spots.
Any other public comment?
Heather Dean, 919 Stilson Road. I just, I learned about this recently, as most of the neighbors had as well, and what came to my mind was that for 10 years, I worked very hard on the RTM, trying to pass the reusable bag ordinance. And it was a lot of work. And my whole goal was to preserve the environment, starting in Fairfield and Connecticut nationally. I, I don't like to contradict anyone who I respect as far as, you know, their opinions on this being a town-wide need, but I look at this as being just wrong for a natural purpose, that you don't pave the ground for additional parking spots. And I was thinking, so what's a better solution? Don't just come up here and say no. Couldn't we be, think a little bit more town-oriented as far as having shuttle buses that go from, let's say, points of public parking, like the library, and can go to different areas in town where it can be used? I just feel like that money could be used for that. I just heard a comment from another woman. I thought she was very, very eloquent as far as, you know, are we going to be promoting car use or pedestrian? car use or pedestrian use? So I think that we should be promoting pedestrian use and being able to go from one place to another to another and do it more collectively. I don't support this, and I hope that you don't support it either. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, back to the board. Any further discussion here, or? There's some good arguments. You did a great job for working with computers. You did a great job. Don't underestimate yourself. You were very compelling.
My wife's words.
Tell her she did great. Mike, you brought up a good point. My daughter's 14 now. You know, years passed, I did a lot of business at the library. I never had a problem parking. And that, as soon as you said that, I'm going back to my personal experience. So that question, and me, in my mind, now I'm questioning the need. To the people that live on that road or live in the vicinity, you did a great job by saying, "I live in a historic district." And part of me says that when I'm sitting at this table, I have to look out for the greater good of the town. But I think there's a reasonable assurance that somebody that buys in a historic district, that there's always going to be a minimal impact on that neighborhood, even though you live close to the center of town. You said something that I felt that there's a comfort level in there that, "This is what I'm buying." You know, all the constraints that you entered into by buying that house, that you're going to have to go in front of the historic district, that you're not going to be able to do this, that there's all these restrictions that you're going to have to abide. And then, here we are, the town coming in and doing this. You got me there. And also, too, to Stanton, this claim seems pretty valid of this easement. Now, I heard that originally, we were at 49 spaces, then we went down to 39 with, I'm going to say, Engineering. It sounds like we're going down to 29 to accommodate that easement. Is that where we wind up at the 29?
I'm really not here to debate it. However, he refers to an easement, you know, easement is a very broad term. This is what's called a right to pass and repass. If you fought this out, would a court say, "They still have the right to pass and repass over part of this property, so you're okay." Maybe they say that, maybe they don't, okay?
To accommodate that conflict, do I go down to 29 spaces?
That's up to you.
And Mark, is that what the plan is there to accommodate? Is that why, how we get to that 29 number?
That is my estimate based on the plans that Engineering had drawn up, yes. Yep.
Those are my thoughts right now.
I think you make a number of good points, and besides the points here, I know I've gotten, and I assume we all have, I want to say 40 or 50 emails from the surrounding neighbors in terms of, and making a number of the same points. And, you know, key theme is coming back is this is the historic district. And, you know, I think, Mr. Bateson, as you said, that there's a certain expectation that we'll preserve the historic district. That's what we ask our residents to do. I think that frankly, this, from a library standpoint, this is definitely something that doesn't come up. There's not a lot of options for expanding parking. There's not a lot of space downtown from that standpoint. I think it's healthy that this discussion take place because I think it gives us a chance to reestablish and recommit to our values over time and look at what's taking place there. Mr. Timniak, did you have anything to add on that?
I mean, I've been a historic district believer my entire life, and I've been a no vote since Mark called me. And I'm just going through, you know, I appreciate the Library Board, what they did. This has never been something I've intended to support. So if we want to table it for more information, but I haven't polled the other members or asked where you stand, I haven't supported it, and I don't intend to support it, no matter what information comes back.
You were considering a motion? Do you want to make that motion, or do we want to vote?
I'll vote.
Mr. Timniak, you okay with that?
I'm fine with it, yeah, absolutely.
All right. So the items before, it's been properly motioned and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed?
No.
All right. The item did not pass. Thank you all. Next up, for the, from the Parks and Recreation Director, to hear, consider, and act upon a request. Excuse me, if I could ask that we just be a little quiet as we try and move on with the meeting, but I do appreciate everybody's attendance and coming out to speak. From the Parks and Recreation Director, to hear, consider, and act upon a request from the Parks and Recreation Commission to require testing of all parks, fields, and playgrounds under the Commission's purview for contaminants, as approved by the Commission at its August 21st, 2019 meeting. Mr. Calibres.
Thank you. Anthony Calibres, Director of Parks Recreation. First, I don't know what I did to get behind that item and this agenda. Man, good discussion, though. So yes, I am here on behalf of the Parks Rec Commission. I do have my Chairman Scott Walker here to hopefully answer any questions for you guys. But the request is fairly simple. There's 21 additional locations between parks and some, I'll call them field areas that have not been tested, that they would like to see tested. The vote tally that night was 7-0-1. We had one abstention. So they are pretty much unanimously in favor of this request. If you have questions, I'll have Scott come up to try and answer them.
To the board, any questions from the board? Yeah, where did the, the, did the desire to test come from people emailing you, concerns from the Commissioners? Has this, I'd just like to know where it came from. I mean...
I'll have Mr. Walker come up.
Okay.
Scott Walker, Chairman of Parks and Recreation Commission. The concerns came from, obviously, people in the community and also from our discussions on the Commission.
Okay, so you were getting emails on the Commission, like, "I'm not feeling comfortable. Are you going to test this field? Are you going to test this?" So this is in response to the community, and you guys got together?
Yes.
Okay. What's the select, what was the selection process, or is this everything?
The selection process was, we wanted to have you test everything under Parks and Rec jurisdiction. You've already tested a number of those properties. Our Director put together the 21 remaining properties that we're asking you to test. Add to your list that, of the additional properties around town, you're already testing. I believe the 21 is still the accurate number.
Do we have a cost on this?
We do not. We'd have to probably go out to either bid or get it from current LEP.
Mr. Timniak?
I would say we have no reason to indicate that these are, you know, hot properties. They weren't on the top 20 list originally. Is that right?
That's correct.
So I would recommend going forward with the test, just not paying the additional fee for the expedition to get the results in. I think we're moving into the, you know, end of fall season, and I think we, you know, these not being the top 20, I think it's important we test them to see what we actually So that would be what I would recommend.
To help guide the testing, is there a list, any work over the, I'm going to say 2013 to 2016 time period that was done at these? So there's some, as opposed to testing an entire, let me look at, an entire field? Is there someplace where work was done that we might be able to focus that testing to help adjust both the concern, but someplace that work was done?
No. No. And I would have to check with Public Works to see about seasonal maintenance, but there were no significant renovations, construction additions, anything like that to any of these locations during that timeframe.
Okay.
Well, we've made a decision that we're not going to trust the information we have. We have to verify everything because we don't have accurate records of where this stuff went throughout the town. So I would recommend we test.
Yeah, given the nature of what was going on, I agree with what you guys are doing. I, you know, going back to the emails you guys had received about the glass on the playing fields and everything, there was a breakdown in control, so I agree with this process. We don't, could I take some comfort in that maybe nothing happened? Yes, but it did happen, so to be safe, I'm going to assume that it could have happened to every field. So I agree with this.
All right. Okay, to go to public comment, any further discussion at this point? Any comment from the public?
Dana Carey, Seven Green Acres Lane. To start with, the fields were addressed in a set of emails that I posted. And I encourage you to go back to the email records of the town. There was an email that said, "Does Mike know that this was all due to one town employee?" Find those emails. Go back to the work orders. Make smart choices. Yes, we need to test. Yes, we need to know where fill has been used. But we also need to understand the scope of what the problem is. So please go back to the history of what the work orders are. Interview every single DPW employee. Talk to your employees. Find out what really happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
It's Bill Hopf from Emelk Hills, Road North. I think if I understood her correctly, I think she's saying, "Is there a way we can know for sure where everything went to cut down on the extent of our testing, I think?" And I hope I understood you correctly, which I agree with. My concern is that what happens, for instance, I've been led, I believe I heard in one of these many meetings that, like, the level of arsenic in nature can be above the limit that we've set as far as what we remediate. And one of the playscapes, they found some compound that was leftover from tires that were used to construct the playscape that was there before this one. So is the town probably, I'm thinking the town is going to be legally responsible to remediate any contamination that they find when they do testing, or leave themselves open to a lawsuit of some kind? So I support her thought is to know, try to, I mean, find out where all this stuff from this pile went, instead of testing every place, all the properties that we have. Because I'm thinking specifically about the soccer field that's behind the senior center, that's up against the, an old transfer station pile. And that's been closed for a long time, and I'm thinking, there's got to be stuff from that that's leached into the field. I'm not in favor of having the kids play or adults play on a field when there's stuff, but I think that we're going to end up, I think we're going to end up having to remediate everything. We'll have the one town and the entire state that's got perfect stuff, and we have to know that we're going to spend the money for that. So that's my feeling. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, back to the board. Any further discussion, or are we ready to vote?
Ready to vote.
All right, all in favor say aye. Oh. All right. Make a motion, a second? Okay, the item is now officially before us. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you. That passes. Next up, item number eight, review and approve selectman compensation for the next term.
Oh, make a motion?
Second.
All right. Now, this item is, the recommendation is from the Compensation Committee. The charge that was drafted and approved by this board, drafted by Mr. Bateson, approved by this board. Any further discussion on the recommendation?
I don't think I drafted it. Did I draft something?
The charge?
Oh, I did. The charge.
Okay, I thought you were talking about the results.
No, 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 sorry. Just the charge. The committee had, this committee made up of two Board of Finance members, two RTM members, met separately from this board, came up with their recommendations, and has submitted them in writing to this board.
You just want to make a, what's the motion going to be, just to adopt their recommendation?
Yeah, I made a motion to do it.
That's what Mr. Timniak did? I think you second it?
Right.
Any further discussion on that?
No.
All right. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. Moving on to item nine, to hear, consider, and act upon any other business that shall promptly come before this board.
I have two things, if I can.
Please.
One, it came to my attention last week that one of our town attorneys, or I guess town attorney's license was suspended last year for a nine-month period. I'm wondering who's responsible for checking to make sure that the license of that said attorney is valid and good. The attorney I'm specifically speaking about is Mr. Hibson. And I'm wondering who's responsible for checking to make sure that that is a valid, that he's operating on the town without a suspended legal license. And I double-checked that through the Connecticut Judiciary website, and it did indicate that his license was suspended. And during that timeframe, he would have negotiated two of our union contracts, of which we're paying him a stipend to be our legal representation to do that. I'm just wondering who's responsible for making sure that that, that all of his credentials are in order.
I think it's more than reasonable this board asked Mr. Hibson to explain what transpired then, and to explain what the impact was.
Okay. Should I directly ask him, or should I have him attend the next meeting? Should I submit the information I have to him?
If you'd like to submit that, that would be great. Otherwise, I will direct it, but if you have more specific questions to make sure we get all that information addressed, that would be good.
Well, my specific question is, he has a, he has a set contract. We gave him a side deal for the $50,000. And in that side deal, it says specifically, "The employee shall maintain in good standing as a lawyer." And in this case, he wasn't in good standing as a lawyer for nine months and continued to do the town business. I'm wondering if he notified anybody, such as yourself, that he was not in good standing?
Again, I think that we should give Mr. Hibson a chance to address that.
Can I ask our town attorney here if he knows anything about that? First you've heard of it, okay. And I'm assuming you haven't heard of this either.
I have heard of that, but I think through the follow-up emails that may have brought it to your attention also.
Okay. All right. So that's one. Did you have anything?
Not on that, no.
All right. The other one is, I came across some documents here, and I want to know who this, who's paying for this reputation advisory firm we have?
The town is, that's our communications consultant we brought in.
Okay. What are we, what do, can I have that contract?
Certainly.
All right. What are we paying him, or the firm? What's the, what's the cost? What's the objective for that?
That was to help us with some very significant communication issues, both with the arrest of two town employees and then with the soil contamination issue.
All right. So it's a reputation advisory firm?
It's a communications specialist.
So I went to the website, and I looked into it, and, I mean, they do, they do a lot of stuff, and I actually have a copy of the management plan they gave. I'm surprised you didn't make the Board of Selectmen aware of this plan. I'm surprised you didn't make the Board of Selectmen aware of this plan. Why did you not make the Board of Selectmen aware of this communication advisory plan?
Because we addressed, we jumped right into doing that was a very quick, very significant, and very serious communication issue. And we worked on that day-to-day as we're going through that, so...
So two members of your administration are arrested. Hazardous waste is spread all across the town.
Actually, that's not correct. Hazardous waste has not been determined to be spread all across the town.
Okay. All right.
In fact, the Department of Health has specifically said that's not the case.
And that's specifically what is outlined here in this management plan here, where they talks about the highlights and the lowlights, and what we should and should not be advising. And there's a whole bunch of stuff in here. This needs, reads more as a political document than it does a management plan. My point is that we, our tax dollars went to hire a firm to deal with, to deal with the messaging coming out?
In essence, emergency communication. Absolutely. We took, getting the accurate word out to our residents of exactly where we were bringing somebody onboard who dealt with this type of situation in the past, is essential.
So, yeah, essentially, so this management firm created the roadmap we've been following, or you've been following for the last two months on this?
We worked them to do that. Absolutely.
Okay. So, and then that's essentially, I guess, my point here, that we outsourced, and it says here in point number two, because we talked about it the last meeting, leadership. We've outsourced the leadership to this G7 reputation advisory group. Think about that. A reputation...
We did not outsource the leadership. We did bring in them for their communication skills. They helped us put together the town webpage. They helped us format the communication, make sure that we were getting accurate information out, and the important information out to our residents.
And that goes exactly to what I saw at the DTC headquarters opening, when Jim Heims talked about, "Hey, we need to get a message together. We need to be all from the same playbook. And here we go. We have the message right here, paid for by the taxpayers of Fairfield."
That's a little bit political on your part, Mr. Timniak, and really not appropriate for this body.
Okay. Well, I don't think the residents of Fairfield were aware that they paid a firm to handle the reputation...
They weren't paid for the reputation. He was paid for his communication skills.
And what did it cost?
All right. We can get you that information.
I would love to have that contract tomorrow morning by 10:00 a.m., if I can.
Mike, I'm going to jump in here. I got this last night. And we came across this through FOI. There's a fine line here. You're 30 days away from reelection. You say that this is not political. Okay? We cannot ignore the politics that are, that are here, that are in front of us. There's a fine line of what, are you doing this for the taxpayer? Are you doing this because your reputation was damaged in a potential upcoming election? Now, when I read this stuff last night, I'm like, okay, I get it. We were facing something that we have never faced before. But there's a fine line here, that you were getting beat up on social media, no doubt that that was happening. This happens. Now I'm like, okay, try to give you the benefit of the doubt that you're doing this for the taxpayer. But then I read this, on one of these slides, it says, "Through surrogates, call out those who irresponsibly raise public fears." That's political. Yeah. I'm, now, no, I'm talking. That's political. And the simple fact that, what's a reasonable fear? A mother that's concerned that her kids are playing in a playground? Use surrogates to attack them? That's not serving the residents of Fairfield. So when I see that in a document that's bought and paid for by the town of Fairfield, it causes me concern. I don't think, don't think your answer's going to fly there.
Yeah. Mr. Bateson, just to be clear, that document was not bought and paid for by the town of Fairfield?
You said it was.
No, I didn't. You said it was.
No, you did.
You did. Five minutes ago. So now it's...
I asked, who paid for this? You said the town paid for it.
We paid for Mr. Gettys' work. We did not pay for that document. We hired him as an individual to come in and help us with that. We hired him when we knew that there was arrest was going to be made. We hired him bef, he was onboard before the soil information came out. So this was not in response to anything that was happening on social media. This was literally to make sure that we had a very complex and difficult communication situation coming up, and we wanted to make sure we got that information out clearly to the town residents to address the seriousness of this. And we owed our residents that.
So I just, this management plan was paid for by who? This one, right here.
Okay. Yeah. It looks like that was done for the town.
Okay. The town, the town paid for this management plan. And we don't know what it cost. We don't know what the contract was. We don't know what the objective was. Very, very...
We do have a contract, and we do know what it costs, and I will get you that information.
Okay. Ed and I are also on the Board of Selectmen, and clearly, clearly, there's stuff in here we disagree with. And again, this is, this is, this is, this is a document which was, it's a political, it's a roadmap to save the reputation. And it's outrageous. It's outrageous.
Yeah. That was part of the communication plan that was put together. But the idea is that very definitely, we brought in somebody with that background to make sure that we could get out complete and thorough communication and make sure our residents were updated.
Like, members of your campaign are on the email chain.
I don't have anything else tonight.
All right.
Yeah. I'm a little disappointed in it.
All right. Thank you.
Hey, give him a call and figure out how to fix this.
Very nice.
Yes.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.